This time, we'd like to open the public hearing for the Roberts' conditional use for townhouses.
Notice of public hearing on September 8th, 2025 at 7:00 PM at the City Council Chambers at 55 West Idaho. The City of Weezer City Council will hold a public hearing to receive comment on a request by Brent and Lynette Roberts for a conditional use permit to place townhouses on a property on the corner of East Liberty and East 11th Street. The legal description is parcel number RPW 2100004009B, lots 9, 10, 11, Block 4, Shannon Edition. All interested persons are invited to attend the hearing or submit written comments seven days before the public hearing. For more information, please contact Dave Luce, Planning and Zoning Administrator, at City Hall 55 West Idaho, Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, or at (208) 414-1965. Thank you.
Thank you, Natasha. So at this time, I'd like to hear from the applicant.
And I have...
Your name?
My name is Brent Roberts, and I live at 1423 Larson Road. And I have these, these are just Google Earth. I don't know how many people are going to run the council, so we're going to have to share. So the lot in question is the vacant lot, depending on how you're holding it, next to the county. You can see the county and the cars that are parked there. So that's the lot in question. And I believe everybody has plans. Did you have plans? And then also, we had photo-realistic drawings made up, didn't we? Does anybody have those? Perfect. Okay. Okay, so we are proposing to build two five-unit townhome buildings on this lot. Part of the, I guess, the problematic issue with this lot is that it is adjacent to the county. It's been perpetually vacant. It's not, it's kind of an eyesore as it is right now, just because it has been vacant for so long. And, you know, as far as like building a single-family home or even duplexes, which we could, we could build as many, currently with the current codes, we could build three duplexes on, build one duplex on each of the three lots. So we could already do that. But there's, we're trying to create a bit more diversity with the housing here in Weezer. I know the council has already approved at least one townhome subdivision that I know of, but that hasn't, they haven't started building it yet. So everybody, you can just drive around, you get notifications in your email from Zillow with the housing prices, and everybody knows that the housing prices are continually going up. And, you know, whether you're a young family or an empty nester looking for a place to purchase, everything's extremely expensive. And so in the line of having some townhomes here in Weezer to make, to give people some options, we figured this would be a great option for this lot. So what we are proposing with these townhomes, so all of the units that we have are, they're three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath with a kitchen, living space, pantry, and a half-bath downstairs. And then all of the bedrooms are upstairs. So there's going to be three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a laundry space upstairs. So they're, in keeping them in the realm of affordability, they're not very big. So they're going to be 1,300 to 1,600 square feet. The 1,600, the larger units will be on the ends, and the smaller units will be in the middle. When we met with Planning and Zoning, several of the members of Planning and Zoning were familiar with these types of townhomes. If you drive around Boise, Meridian, Mampa, I don't know that I've seen any in Brooklyn or Pad. But there's a big difference between apartments and townhomes. And I know from the last meeting that we had, there was some negativity to the idea of anything multifamily because of the concern of attracting, not the kind of people that people wanted to have as neighbors, I guess. But because these are individually owned, there's, I guess, for lack of better terms, maybe more care from the people that own these or live here because versus renting these, these will be able to be purchased individually by individual people. All units have a gas or electric fireplace. All units have upgraded countertops. The master bedrooms in all units have walk-in closets, as well as a separate toilet room within the master bedroom. Around the outside of this lot, we're going to be putting in, installing sidewalks and curb and gutter, which currently, if you look around the entire block, there's not really sidewalks. I mean, there's a sidewalk here, there's a partial sidewalk here, nothing here, then this sidewalk here, and then a sidewalk that goes around the outside of the property on the county. And so what we're proposing is to put the sidewalk up to the edge of the pavement here, and then all the way around the curb and gutter. So there won't be any, what do you call, that space in between, as you drive around Weezer, the swell?
Parkway.
Parkway. Swell. I guess there's multiple terms. But we're going to put the sidewalk right next to the roadway, so that it's easier to be maintained. Let's see. All units have a two-car garage. So the idea is to have parking, people be able to park inside their garage. And then also, to maximize the alleyway there, we're going to have parking along the alley next to, next to the county there. Solutions, we are providing diversity of housing, like I talked about, improve a perpetually vacant lot. Of course, I'm biased because we're wanting to do this project, but it's the best use that we could think of for that lot, given its location and what it's surrounded by. And then, of course, putting in a sidewalk. There's amazing access, you know, to the Weezer River Trail, and, you know, there's parks right up there. And as it is right now, there's no sidewalk at all on that whole, on that whole corner. So the issues, right now, currently it's Zone B1, which we would have to get a conditional use permit to be able to build multifamily on, in B1 Zone. I brought this zoning map. This is where, this is the lot right here, and this is all B1 around the county. And then, as far as other issues is, as it is right now, on the 11th Street side of the property, we're 25 feet from 11th Street, from the pavement. But we're, as it stands, like two to three feet from the property line. So I know that that, I don't know if we would need to get a variance to be able to build that close to the property line. But I also have, as far as how close folks are to the road already, there's homes, as you drive around, I mean, I just did this off Google Earth, but there's homes all over in that area that are 25 feet or less from the pavement as it is right now. So it's not like we would be the only ones that would be within 25 feet of the pavement. It's just that we're close to the property line as it stands. So and then, of course, as far as the blue sky or the open area, the minimum requirement, I think it's like 60%. We're at 72. So even with everything that we have, we're still well within the required blue sky requirement.
So a couple of questions for you. So I just wanted to make sure of what we're deciding here. Your request tonight, as I understand it, is for a conditional use permit for townhomes? So am I right in that your design hasn't been reviewed by city staff and that the, so all we're deciding tonight is whether you can have townhomes on these lots? Is that correct?
Well, we met with Planning and Zoning, and we got approval from them pending meeting with the City Council.
Okay, they made a recommendation, but it, I'm not sure it's on a specific design for the project. It's just for a conditional use permit. Is that correct, or am I?
I don't know that they can continue with the process without a conditional use. I don't know that you could bring it to city staff before the conditional use is granted.
I think that's what Larry's, can I? All we're voting on is conditional use, yes or no.
So all the planning stuff are nice and the
Right, right.
The design and all that, but that's yet to come. All we're deciding tonight is whether you can put townhomes.
Then they would need to proceed with the preliminary plat being approved.
Right, all that stuff, yeah.
So, sir, unfortunately, this is just round one for you.
No, that's fine.
Okay, so so as you said, duplexes are allowed in this zone.
Right.
So why aren't you proposing duplexes?
Well, because that'd be too easy and it's making things difficult. No, part of it is there's just not, there's not any option for townhomes. And with these, we'll have, it'll have its own HOA that'll take care of the maintenance of everything. So this is meant to be low maintenance. You move in, you don't have to mow your grass, you don't have to upkeep any of the landscaping. That will all be taken care of. So it's not just for young families, but I know for a lot of people in Generation X and some of the Baby Boomers, there's a real allure, and especially people that we've talked to in some of these other cities, to these townhome options where you can just move in and you don't have to mess with anything. You don't have to mess with your grass. You don't have, and of course, you know, there's some people that they really like to mess with their grass and, you know, run their lawnmower and their edger and stuff like that. But this is an option that we don't have in Weezer to do that. So and as far as, you know, you can see with what we're proposing to build, these are really nice, handsome properties that are, again, it's something that we, we just don't have anything like this in Weezer. And I know from other developers that we've talked to, there's a real gap here that has been filled in other cities that we're trying to, you know, I grew up here, and I know a lot of people did as well. Just trying to bring something nice and different to Weezer, to fill a need.
Okay, so if we approve this, it kind of opens the door for other applicants in B1 to do the same thing, unless we can say that this is unique because, and, you know, the conditional use permit, you know, is predicated by something that says because of the characteristics of the property, you know, this use should be allowed. Is there anything that that you know of that makes this property unique and that makes these townhomes more appropriate than a single-family residence or a duplex, which is allowed in this?
Right, right. That's a great question. I think the biggest thing is where it's located and what it's surrounded by. I mean, if you, if you look at the aerial, with the county, of course, you know, it is, it is what it is, but from the aerial view, it looks like a salvage yard. And so it's not, if I was going to build my own house right there, or if I was going to pick a lot to build a house, I probably would pick something different for, even if it was just for that reason alone. And I know that, you know, when people are looking around, there's lots of options, places to build, to buy, or whatever. And, you know, if you have the option to build in Lot A, which is, you know, surrounded by homes with upkept yards, or Lot B, which is by what looks like a salvage yard, you're going to choose the other, the other option. And so and we could, you know, like you say, we could just put duplexes.
On the other, Lynette Roberts, 1423 Larson Road, just with that lot and with that block there.
Please state your name.
Yes, Lynette Roberts, 1423 Larson Road. With that lot, the biggest thing is we have the county there, which is a commercial property on that, in that same residential area. And then we also have the trailer park right behind it on, I don't know what street it is.
That's on 12th, yeah.
Within the same block, though.
Right there, on the corner, upper corner.
Towards me.
Right there, those are trailers right there.
And so for the, for the features of that specific block, because we already have the trailer park, and we already have a commercial building, that's why we thought that it would be a good spot for the townhomes, where it's not surrounded by just residential on that same block. So that's the biggest features of why we chose that lot to possibly put these townhomes within the city limits.
And do you think that makes, makes the lot more appropriate for townhomes than, say, a duplex?
I do, because, you know, when you, when you're trying to make back your money, you're going to have to do all the stuff anyways, infrastructure and sidewalk, curb and gutter. You're going to have to do all of that anyways. So in being able to make them affordable, spreading and amortizing that out over 10 units versus six, yeah, for sure.
It just makes it, makes the units more affordable, so we can keep the prices to where it becomes more affordable for the people that we're trying to get them for. Because we, like when we started this project, we're thinking of our kids, who are now young married adults, you know, and they're getting priced out of everything. So we're trying to put something in that fills that gap, but also for, like, people like our parents, who are ready to move into something that's maintenance-free. So you can kind of bridge the gap for those two demographics.
So if it's a wider demographic, then it would have saved, if it was just duplexes or even a single-family home. You have, you can reach more people.
And on a duplex, if we put the duplexes in here, you would have a larger yard that would have to be maintained versus putting the two, five-unit townhomes.
Whereas putting the maintenance on HOA that takes care of everything.
Well, that also makes the yards smaller for the HOA to maintain. Can make someone, does that make sense? I don't know if that falls into what you guys are looking for, for your city plan, but that's just what we're
Do I have any other questions? Okay, thank you, both of you.
Thank you.
At this time, as we open up for public testimony, I want to remind everybody that we have a three-minute limit. I think Natasha will be timing. Remember to state your name and address, and no comments from the audience. We'd like the speaker to be noticed at the podium only, excuse me. So do we have a list of those signed in to testify? Okay, so at this time, we're going to ask those in favor for their three-minute testimony. And the first one on the list in favor would be Malia Baumgartner.
Hi, Malia Baumgartner, 830 Jonathan Road. I actually kind of want to address what Larry was asking about the duplexes versus the fiveplexes. The problem with duplexes as a Realtor, because you guys all know that I am, is that it's selling a duplex versus a one unit is very tough. So anybody who's coming into town, you know, if they have like a mother or a father that wants to live with them, cool, duplex works great. But most people coming into this community, if they want something that's low maintenance, they don't want to have a second unit. And if we do three, if they do three duplexes, it's going to be very hard for them to sell them and for somebody to want to buy them. It's just been the history of Weezer. Bruce and Jeff Way were the epitome of duplexes, and they sold them fairly decently. Rod can attest to that, but nobody else has been able to do that. So the fiveplexes, if you can sell individual units, it's fabulous. And if you look at the renderings of what they're proposing, their interior walkways, they're entering from the inside. They've got two-car garages. They have tons of parking. They're beautiful. It will, it will help that whole entire neighborhood times 10. Anybody who lives across the street, down the street, down the block, is going to, they're going to levitate their property values because of what they're doing. So I'm a proponent for it. And anyways, yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next on our list in favor is JR Baumgartner.
I just signed it. I didn't know I needed to speak.
Oh, okay. Next on the list is Brent Roberts.
I just signed it.
So both of you too. Okay. So I don't see anybody on the list neutral. Do we have anybody neutral tonight?
I can't hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll speak a little louder. Do we have anybody who's neutral on this issue tonight?
Who what?
Neutral.
Okay, at this time, I do have one person signed in who is against. And I'm sorry, I probably won't pronounce your last name right. Terry
Ramashetti.
Ramashetti, thanks.
Ramashetti, okay. So
Do you want to hear me?
Yes. And just remember to give us your name and address.
Okay, my name is Terry Ramashetti. I live at 1028 East Court Street, which is on the corner of East 11th and Court Street. This property is going to be right across the street from us. So you're proposing 10 units on this parcel, which is the density that's way too high, as far as I'm concerned, for the neighborhood. You're going to have kids moving in there. There's no traffic controls on Liberty and East 11th. We already have people running stop signs, don't pay attention to kids in the street. We have heavy construction equipment from the county yard that's constantly day in and day out. And that's another safety issue for whatever children are going to be in this place. Again, my biggest thing is 10 units on this property is way too big. It's way too condensed. We have our irrigation water. They're going to use that. They're going to drain that, and whatever else they use. And just, to me, it's a bad idea. If they only had a unit of five, maybe, but 10 is way too big. Okay, those are my big concerns. And the fact that I may lose value on my property when they put this in. Because we have a big corner lot, and, you know, who knows what will happen then? Hey, that's me, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Okay, that's, everybody that's on the list.
Oh, I'm on the list. You're supposed to sign in for me.
Okay, go ahead and state your name and address.
I'm Rochelle, 1028 East Court Street. And as far as the property goes, first of all, future developers, all outboards make good money. I have nothing wrong with that. All developers do that. But the problem I have is the wrong place, the wrong project, where it's at. You have a city block there, that 90% of that city block is all industrial, you know, the county yard, all your equipment coming and going, tractors, dump trucks, excavators, little boys, people coming and going all day long. And you want to take and throw 10 families right in the middle of that. So a lot of kids, I'm assuming, we got three bedrooms. Sounds like a pretty dangerous place to me, for a bunch of kids living right in the middle of this big industrial complex. If you're better off, it was out of 9th Street West or somewhere else, where they're developing stuff, but right where there is, wrong place, wrong project for that place. As far as looking good, yeah, that's look good. But we don't care what, it looks good in Boise. We're not in Boise. And as far as a lot there being, you know, not very good-looking, it's no different than any other vacant lot. It's just a vacant lot. There's nothing there. There used to be a building there that there for years and years. It's just a warehouse. They tore that down. So now it's just a vacant lot, no different than any other vacant lot in town, as far as being an eyesore. All vacant lots are eyesore, and it's no different than any rest of them. That's my biggest concern. You're going to have kids out there, maybe not all 10 families, but you're going to have, if you have 10 units, you're going to have kids out there. They're going to run around with all this construction equipment going and going all the time, in and out, tractors and trucks, like I said. You got salesmen and parts people. It's a constant. It's a big industrial facility there. And some kid gets around over and killed, you're going to have blood on your hands for approving that. They don't care. They're going to still, they're going to be gone. They could care if that's what happens. It's all about money. I bet they're wrong, it's making money, just not there with that project. And I know they made a remark last time, well, you know, if they had all 10 houses there, if the complex wasn't there, it'd be the same. But it would be the same, but it'd be like everybody else. If you had 10 houses there, there wouldn't be an industrial complex there. So you wouldn't have all that construction equipment running around and everything. So it's a whole different ballgame. You do have it, and you're right in the middle of it. It's just a bad, bad idea. So there you go.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Okay, at this time, do we have anybody else against this project? If not, we will close that part of the hearing. The people in favor, the applicant has a chance to reveal it. Any comments made?
So of course, as an applicant, I appreciate that, especially the neighbors around this law have an opportunity to present their their concerns, because, again, I grew up here, and I do want to make, I want to live in this community forever. I hope my kids can move back here and that they can live here. And so I am trying to make a a good spot for not just my kids, but I've talked to classmates that from back in 1993, when we graduated high school, and a lot of them that I've talked to, they're like, oh, yeah, if I was going to move back to Weezer, I would gonna move back to Weezer, I would totally buy something like this. So, it's not, it's not just gonna be families with a bunch of little kids running around. I think it's gonna fit the demographic for empty nesters, or those who are getting ready to kick their last couple of kids out, and those that, you know, have already done so. So, I don't think, whether it's 10 units or six duplexes, I don't think that the amount of kids would be any different, because you're gonna have a mix of empty nesters in there. As far as the amount of water and the landscaping and that sort of stuff, if we did put duplexes in there, there would be more grass than there would be if we just put in these 10 units. And there's a well on the property, so it's not gonna be consuming Weezer water, we can just use the water from an existing well that's already there. And the well is actually already anticipated, it's actually in the middle of the, there's the two units in the well, this is right there in the middle, so there's already plans to reuse that. I think that was, I think I addressed everything that they brought up, so.
Good, thank you very much. And I want to thank everybody for your testimony, because I think what makes Weezer great is that y'all get your chance to come in and speak, and, you know, we appreciate what you had to say to every one of you. So at this time, we will close the hearing, and we will move on to our item number three, which is the action item on the Roberts' conditional use for the townhouse.
So, okay, it's a little difficult, but for me to keep in mind what we're actually approving here, just because of the progress and the information that the applicant has provided us, but what it boils down to is, we're deciding whether they can, instead of having duplexes or single-family residences there, whether they can have townhomes. And how they design them, or what water, whatever doesn't, is something that we can talk about at every day. You know, the folks who spoke against the proposal, basically to me, said that there will be too much traffic, there will be, you know, children who are in danger because of being allowed to be there. To the first point, at least in, I guess, in my opinion, traffic for, for basically a couple extra units, isn't that, isn't that much different? As far as children being there and being in danger, I think that's really a decision for the buyer to make, whether that property is conducive to, to, you know, to having your kids, or that's one of the choices you make as a buyer, is this place, if I have two or three kids, is this a place I want, you know, my kids to be housed, to be raised? The, I think the applicant's point about the uniqueness of that property to other B1 properties is valid. And, you know, we probably have some work to do on the specific, you know, how it's going to look to begin with, and that's, again, to be decided on a different day. I think because it's next to, you know, commercial, I'm not sure what that, what the county's property is owned there, does make it unique. And, you know, I think with the, I guess my opinion is, as the Planning and Zoning Commission said, are recommend to us is to, you know, approve this applicant's request.
I would agree that there's a lot, there's a lot going on, on this lot, which makes me more in favor of doing a conditional use permit, and I would agree with Larry that it is, it's the buyer's determination if they decide if that's safe, and for their kids, or their dogs, or whatever that means to them. And I don't see a problem with the conditional use permit at all.
Does the conditional use permit specify the number of units that we would be approving, or is it just conditional use for townhomes?
I think it would be just a conditional use for townhomes, and I need to stand corrected, it will not, there will not be preliminary plat and final plat, it's already subdivided, they would just come in with design.
So we could have other people, city officials? Is that why you're, yes, no?
Mike's just saying, because it's already subdivided, that they would not need to bring a preliminary plat, they would just need to bring design, and then go over setbacks, and see what was allowed and what wasn't.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to stand corrected, that there will not be preliminary plat process.
Gotcha.
Okay, so this, so, basically, as long as it meets our building codes and setbacks and all of that.
Yes.
It moves forward?
It moves forward. Unless we say contingent upon design review? Yes?
So, yeah, I guess I have a question about that. Inasmuch as, you know, our design reviews and the procedures thereof are pretty new, I guess it was, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong here, seems to me that the design review committee would have, that would be a separate process to whether they could actually have townhomes here, it would be more on the construction phase.
You have the actual look of them, correct? Is that what you're talking, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
And is the design review for commercial only, or for anything other than commercial?
It's commercial, but also anything that's a specific number of units.
Yeah.
So duplex, I believe, is okay, but I think when you get to the four or fiveplexes, I think it'd next, but I'm not sure, I'd have to review.
Okay, and again, with, so, with this request, we're just saying, yeah, it's okay, we're gonna put townhomes here, so the rest of, you know, we should probably think about, as we go along here, how that process is gonna work, because if there's no other, no other requests that would come before planning and zoning, or anything like that, would come up to the design review committee?
They would have to come back and ask for setback changes, if they don't meet the current setbacks from the property line, not the right-of-way edge, and then they'd have to probably come back and ask for, they'd have to ask Dave, because he's not here, for, I believe, an MOU for, to using the alley as an entranceway, because those are utility rightaways, not driveways, so there would be something Dave could answer on how that goes.
Well, if you put town, if you put, as is shown in this document, if you put five townhomes on three lots, then you're not gonna meet the setbacks.
Usually sidewalks are at the back of right-of-way, commonly, and then that's why there's a parkway there, narrows the road. I mean, I know this isn't part of this, I don't know if this is where we talk about this or not, but.
No, but I think it's a concern, because if we, if we, to take into consideration all the concerns that could possibly be there, right, I think that's one of the reasons that we were, okay, with the idea of there being, okay, we've approved this, now what is it actually gonna look like, so we can handle those other concerns? But if it is just, we say, conditional use, yeah, and then?
I mean, they're still gonna have to meet all the setbacks, they're still gonna have to meet all the building code and all of that, when it comes to design and everything like that. So, they're not gonna be able to go outside the parameter of what is currently set.
What our current codes are, without getting additional variances, basically.
Variances, yes.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, I think the fact that our Planning and Zoning Commission approved this is very important, they work hard and do a lot of research in order to recommend to us, and they recommend that we do this, and I agree with that.
They did, but they did also make the recommendation with approval by design.
Okay.
Just so you know, like I said, yes, but with recommendation of approval by Design Review Committee, which is what we just found out, not actually required technically, unless we chose to do that.
So, are you saying that?
I'm saying nothing. I am processing my thoughts verbally. That's, I think, so, okay, all right, because I'm the blabber here, I think for me, that is where I get hung up. I think with the comp plan and the discussions that we have, and what P&amp;Z has done for us, has helped us understand, this is in alignment with the overall goal that we have for Weezer. It is an identified need that we have, that the comp plan identified, that we've paid for in that report, and that ideally, it is a place that we could put them. I also can, which is where now I'm blurring the lines, because I can see all this beautiful information put in front of me that is distracting me, that I shouldn't have seen, honestly, because in seeing this, I have lots of questions about how we will meet those needs, that I think fall within the guidelines that we have as a city. So, I hate to say, I think I was given too much information. Like, honestly, I think that's what it is, I saw too much. Thank you for being prepared, I think it was too much, because now I have too many questions that make me say, ugh, it's not an easy yes or no for me. It is, there's a lot of other concerns that I would be raising with understanding how to fit and get the variances to make it all work together. I think that's where I am flustered at the moment, with myself.
Would you feel better if we added the Design Review Committee approval?
I don't know, that means more work for me.
So, to address, you know, I shared that, but I think we need to fall back on the request, and the Design Review Committee and that process, we need to rely on, you know, on what we've approved in the process that is, you know, in place there, even though we can't recall it right off the top of our heads.
It's a lot of pages.
Yeah. And, Sterling, I agree, I think we got too much information, and it's hard to say to yourself.
Don't look at it.
This isn't what we're deciding.
Right.
But, you know, I think we need to stick to what we're deciding. Can they have a conditional use permit to have townhomes on this piece of property? And if the approval of the specific townhomes includes a review by the Design Review Committee, then we'll have it, and if it does not, then, you know, then I don't think it's appropriate for us to require that, for a specific instance.
We have to rely on our codes and our setbacks and things like that, and hopefully they will stay within those means of those to promote safety.
Hey, do we have any further discussion?
No, I'm ringing.
Mayor, I would make a motion for approval of the conditional use permit for townhomes as presented by Brent and Lynette Roberts.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, can we get the roll call?
Councilmember Chipman?
Yes.
Von Redhorse?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Blackwell.
I guess I'll say yes. I guess. I'm not happy. I wanted more work, Larry.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, and thank everybody for testifying, and giving us all the information that you could give us to try and make the best decision possible on this matter.